Okay, Mr. Myers.
Here.
Dr. Stevens?
Present.
Mr. Stenit?
Present.
Mr. Beard?
Present.
Mr. Blevins?
Here.
Mr. Blues?
Here.
Ms. Crosby?
Here.
Mr. DeCamp?
Here.
Ms. Gorton?
Go Cats!
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. James? And Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mr. McCord?
Here.
And Mr. Maloney.
Appears we do have a quorum, so we'll proceed with business. It's my pleasure to call on Pastor Joe Truster from the Gethsemane Lutheran Church to give our invocation this evening.
Thank you very much. Will you join me, please, in a moment of silence and of prayer? Almighty God, we ask your blessing upon this city and ask that you make it a place of safety for all people, no matter what color, no matter whether rich or poor. Make our neighborhoods vibrant and whole, where the lost and the lonely will be supported instead of being ignored. Make the diverse fabric of this city a delight to all who live here and a reflection of your beloved community. Bless now these council members and give them the strength and courage to do their work in a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Help them use their authority this night to serve you faithfully and to promote our common life with love and compassion. In all this, we ask in your most holy and precious name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be pleased to know that the presentation has been postponed for a week, so we're ready to proceed with the second reading of ordinances. Madam Clerk.
You have a motion for the minutes, sir?
I apologize. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 16th meeting?
I move to approve the minute.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. You may enter. Madam Clerk.
All right. An ordinance accepting the bid of BCD Incorporated in the amount of $776,700 for the Gainesway Park Community Building and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 59. Number two, an ordinance accepting the bid of Central Rock Mineral Company, LLC, in the amount of $1,861,910.79 for the Star Shoot Parkway Extension and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 63. Number three, an ordinance amending Section 13-44.2 of the Code of Ordinances to specify a tax rate of 5% on all insurance companies based upon the premiums of policies other than life insurance. Number four, an ordinance amending Section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of staff assistant senior grade 108N, creating one position of administrative specialist grade 110N, and reclassifying the incumbent in the Division of Community Corrections to become effective retroactive to July 9, 2007, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 56. Number five, an ordinance amending Section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing 40 vacant positions within various divisions and amending Section 22.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing 25 vacant positions in various divisions to become effective retroactive to June 25, 2007, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 57. Number six, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $220,713.50 federal funds. Our four continuation of the Metropolitan Medical Response Systems, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 58, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number seven, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington State Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 60. Number eight, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation of $1,000 from McDonald's for refurbishment of the safety city facility and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 62. Number nine, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women, which grant funds are in the amount of $200,000 federal funds. Our four continuation of the Safe Havens Project, the Sunflower Kids Visitation Center, a part-time position in the office of the Friend of the Court, and partial funding of the Director of Thaet County Violence Prevention Board, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 61, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 10, an ordinance amending Section 1 of the Ordinance Number 357, 2006, correcting a typographical error in the pay grade from a victim's advocate, grade 112N in the Division of Police. Number 11, an ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 186, 2007, correcting a typographical error in the class code for risk management analyst.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve those ordinances?
No.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? And those in favor of approving the ordinances, please vote aye electronically. Those opposed, vote no electronically. And Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Please, can you all not, will it not allow you to make the first and second motions on your screens? Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. That's great. Fantastic. That's what I need. Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stenit?
Aye.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp? Okay. Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gorton?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes, Ms. Mark, absent.
I'm sorry. I'll get you there. I'll take care of you. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
And Mr. Maloney is absent. Okay.
Thank you. Those ordinances are approved.
Thank you.
Takes us down to the ordinances for first reading. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance Number 12, an ordinance accepting the Lithco Restoration Technologies in the amount of $153,500 for temporary shoring installation of the annex parking structure and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 66. Number 13, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington State Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 64. Number 14, an ordinance amending Section 22.5 of the Code of Ordinances, creating one position of senior advisor grade 212E in the Office of Policy and Budget. Number 15, an ordinance amending Section 23.5 of the Code of Ordinances, creating 25 positions of police officer grade 311N in the Division of Police to become effective December 10, 2007. And number 16, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Department of Highways, which grant funds are in the amount of $12,800 federal funds from the Service Transportation Lexington Program. Our four, the design of a bike lane on Rose Street, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $3,200 as a local match appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 65, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget.
Are there any motions with regard to those items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I think we're prepared to move forward to resolutions for second reading. Councilmember Beard.
There seems to be some discussion amongst some of my colleagues concerning Number 14 and Senior Advisor in the Office of Policy and Budget. Has that individual been identified or?
No, not yet. But we want to go ahead and get the position in place and get the salary mailed down in order to try to get it recruited.
Is the policy, is that overall policy or is that budget policy?
I'm sorry?
The title is Senior Advisor in the Office of Policy and Budget.
Right.
Does the word "policy" relate to the budget or relates to the government as a whole, I guess is the question.
Well, I guess both. I mean, this was, the way it was described in the reorganization that we approved back in June, so I don't think there's any departure from what the case was then. The general notion is the budget is a policy document that permeates the entire scope of Urban County Government, and we need more attention to policy choices.
That's fine. I just, it was unclear, and so does for some of the others.
All right.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we're ready for a second. Okay, Councilman Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about that also. On Tuesday, there was a motion made to remove a budget amendment attached to this position, and I think that budget, by removing that, it was said that that budget, that position was fully funded?
We have funds within the mayor's office budget sufficient to satisfy the payment of that salary, therefore there wasn't a necessity to have a budget amendment, as I understood it.
So there won't be another budget amendment coming later on about this position and the funding for it?
Not, not that I'm planning, no.
Is this coming out of personnel laps or in the mayor's office or?
I think it's the mayor's office budget. We've been able to save enough money on personnel costs to be in a position to fund this without having to seek the money from the surplus fund or elsewhere.
So, then there's personnel laps in the mayor's office?
I don't, I'm not.
It sounds like what you're saying, if you're saying that we saved enough money in personnel.
Commissioner Coe may be able to address that more precisely than I can, so I'll just, I'll let her do that.
I'm not sure exactly what you mean by personnel laps. There's enough money budgeted in the mayor's office in the personnel codes to fund this position by not filling some other positions that were funded. So, it, I mean, the personnel laps really doesn't come into play on this other than those positions have been sitting there unfunded, unfilled since July, so they would be picking up personnel credit, but it doesn't really come into play in this specific position.
Where's another definition of personnel laps if you're saying that using personnel funding from positions that have not been filled?
Well, see, personnel laps is not, is not unique to any unit in the government. Personnel laps is across government. So, we would have been crediting to personnel, from personnel laps, as those positions that were fully funded went unfunded, I mean, went unfilled. So, am I, is the same?
Yeah, so that's the definition of personnel laps. So basically, using personnel laps from positions that have not been filled to fund this position. So, in other words, if you fill those other positions, then you wouldn't have the money to fund this position.
That's right. That's right. If we fill the other positions, we would not have the money to fund this position.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further on that or any other topic for that matter? All right. I think we're ready to move forward with resolutions for second reading.
Resolution Number 1, a resolution accepting the bid of Gray Bar, establishing a price contract for switchgear maintenance for the Division of Sanitary Sewers. Number 2, a resolution accepting the bid of Kimco Corporation, establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Downtown Arts Center. Number 3, a resolution accepting the bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment, establishing a price contract for a fire hose for the Division of Fire. Number 4, a resolution accepting the bid of Business Printing America, establishing a price contract for printing newsletters for the Division of Solid Waste. Number 5, a resolution accepting the bid of Dynamic Technologies Incorporated, doing business as ocean systems, in the amount of $37,994 for a forensic video analysis system for the Division of Police. Number 6, a resolution accepting the bid of Tom Chestnut, Excavation and Construction, LLC, in the amount of $16,200 for the Cross Keys Park Low Water Crossing. Number 7, a resolution accepting the bid of Cab and Associates Incorporated, establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Fire Department 911 Call Center. Number 8, a resolution accepting the bid of Coverall Commercial Cleaning, establishing a price contract for custodial services for youth services. Number 9, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Services, establishing a price contract for custodial services for the County Extension Office. Number 10, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Services, establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Phoenix Building. Number 11, a resolution accepting the bid of KAG Management Group, establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Senior Citizen Center. Number 12, a resolution accepting the bid of TMAC Properties, establishing a price contract for custodial services for police headquarters. Number 13, a resolution accepting the bid of L&amp;N Commercial Cleaning, establishing a price contract for custodial services for police roll call at Goodwin Drive. Number 14, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation of a Lexmark 3500 through 4500 series printer from Lexmark International, Incorporated, for the Urban County Council Office at no cost to the government. Number 15, a resolution authorizing and directing the Division of Traffic Engineering pursuant to Code of Ordinances, Section 1886, to install multi-way stop controls at Bryanale Drive and Northside Drive. Number 16, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements from John and Janet Bricker for property located at 2405 Old Bridge Lane for the South Elkhorn Forest Main Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $3,975 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 17, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 541 through 543 Goodlow Street from Thomas W. Coffey, Jr., Jamie and David Richardson, James Coffey, Charles Coffey, Charles, Thomas Wendell Coffey, Mark and Edith Givens, James Seawright, Jr., Felicia and Enrico Robinson, Candy Givens, Mary Thomason, Dora Seawright, and John Joan T. Brown, for the Ann Street Acquisition Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $6,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 18, a resolution accepting the bid of, accepting the pricing of Phoenix Disaster Services, LLC, in the amount of $79,850.30 for acquisition of medical disaster management software for the Division of Environmental and Emergency Management Services. Number 19, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a maintenance agreement providing for maintenance by the Urban County Government for roads paralleling and intersecting U.S. Route 68 constructed by the Cabinet during its recent improvement project and providing for future transfer of the right-of-way to the Urban County Government. Number 20, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Friends of McConnell Springs Incorporated, $1,025 for the Office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number 21, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Kentucky American Water Company for collection of sewer user fees and landfill user fees at a cost not to exceed $996,000. Number 22, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a hold harmless agreement with Lincoln General Insurance Company for settlement of claims under performance bonds for the Wolf Run Project and the Garden Side Sewer Project at a cost not to exceed $119,576.25, the amount of funds which remain due on these projects. Twenty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a master license agreement with Connectivity Systems Incorporated for TCP IP software at a cost not to exceed $5,510. Number 24, rescinding Resolution Number 359, 2007, which had authorized the mayor to execute an agreement with Commonwealth Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, for installation of fiber optic cable and conduit along portions of Newtown Pike and Ironworks Pike, and provided for reimbursement of the cabinet by the Urban County Government in the amount estimated to be $342,234.25, and terminating the agreement executed pursuant to said resolution. Number 25, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a contract with Proger Limited Partnership to supply influenza vaccine and administer vaccinations to Lexington County Government employees at a cost of $22 per employee not to exceed $36,400. Number 26, a resolution ratifying approvation of civil service appointments of Jevon Brown, childcare program aide, grade 107N, 12.416 hourly in the Division of Family Services, effective October 15, 2007. Sharon Bradley, customer service specialist bilingual, grade 110N, 14.723 hourly in the Division of Government Communications, effective October 1, 2007. Candice Bird, customer service specialist bilingual, grade 110N, 13.600, 13.600 hourly in the Division of Government Communications, effective October 1, 2007. Scott Tyree, public service worker senior, grade 107N, 12.934 hourly in the Division of Water and Air Quality, effective October 1, 2007. Crystal Monday, staff assistant senior, grade 108N, 14.156 hourly in the Division of Central Purchasing, effective October 1, 2007. Ratifying the permanent civil service appointment of Roger Cotton, public service worker senior, grade 107N, in the Division of Parks, effective October 2, 2007. Ratifying the probationary sworn appointments of Charles Pendleton, fire lieutenant, grade 315N, 16.261 hourly in the Division of Fire, effective June 25, 2007. Ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Chris Ward, fire captain, grade 316N, in the Division of Fire, effective June 13, 2007. Mark Samuelson, fire lieutenant, grade 315N, in the Division of Fire, effective January, June 13, 2007. Ratifying the unclassified civil service appointment of Sheila Combs, childcare program aide, grade 107N, 10.347 hourly in the Division of Youth Services, effective October 1, 2007. Number 27, a resolution making a declaration of official intent with respect to reimbursement from subsequent borrowings of temporary advances made for capital expenditures for numerous governments' projects, including but not limited to acquisition of land for a new fire station, ladder truck, and emergency medical care unit for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, renovation, remodeling, and repair of certain police and fire facilities, the Downtown Arts Center, the Government Center, the Opera House, the Purcell's Road Campus Facility, and the Annex Garage, acquisition and installation of mobile data terminals for the Division of Police, and portable computers for the Division of Building Inspection and Code Enforcement, acquisition and installation of a variety of technology equipment, including modems and mounts, personal computers, servers, and related software for several divisions, acquisition and construction of various shared-use trails, construction of Salt Barn, acquisition and installation of fiber optic cable, acquisition and installation of a wave finding science system, acquisition and installation of sign lamps, signal lamps, and traffic signal upgrades by the Division of Traffic Engineering, various infill and redevelopment capital improvement projects, architectural design services for a Senior Citizen Center, various stormwater and other engineering projects, funding for the purchase of Development Rights Program, government-wide fleet replacement and acquisition of miscellaneous government equipment. All is described in the attached exhibit in an approximate aggregate amounts of $31,618,520. Number 28, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Software Development Incorporated for billing services for emergency medical services at a cost not to exceed $145,347.60. Number 29, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Madison County Emergency Management Agency et al. to participate in the Joint Information Center in Madison County, Kentucky, as part of this chemical stockpile emergency preparedness program at no cost to the Urban County Government. And number 30, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a second amendment to Health Services Agreement with Correctional Medical Services Incorporated for meeting the increased need for medical services for inmates of the detention center at an additional cost not to exceed $253,023.
Thank you very much. The floor is open for a motion to approve those resolutions.
I move approval of the resolutions for first, second reading.
I have a motion by Dr. Stevens and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Any discussion? Then, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, and councilmembers, if you'll vote electronically.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stenit? Mr. Stenit?
Mr. Stenit.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear you. Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Still absent.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gorton?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
I got you. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
And Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Thank you. Those resolutions are adopted. That brings us now to the resolutions for first reading. Madam Clerk.
A resolution Number 31, a resolution accepting the bid of Amtech of Kentucky Incorporated, establishing a price contract for maintenance of four outdoor sirens. Number 32, a resolution accepting the bids of Gorton's Food Services and Somerset Food Services, establishing price contracts for food for the Family Care Center. Number 33, a resolution accepting the bid of Ball Homes, establishing a price contract for the donation of printed materials, scorecards for the Division of Parks. Number 34, a resolution accepting the bid of LM Asphalt Partners Limited, doing business as ATS Construction, establishing a price contract for asphalt for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 35, a resolution accepting the bid of LM Asphalt Partners Limited, doing business as ATS Construction, in the amount of $386,850 for 2007 county aid road resurfacing. Number 36, a resolution accepting the bid of Payment Technology Incorporated, in the amount of $95,000 for asphalt surface maintenance with asphalt rejuvenating agent. Number 37, a resolution accepting the bid of American Pavements Incorporated, in the amount of $85,000 for asphalt emulsion, emulsion, flurry seal. Number 38, a resolution accepting the bid of American Pavements, in the amount of $55,000 for 2007 crack ceiling project. Number 39, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Matthew Epperson, golf course clubhouse attendant, grade 106N, 11.494 hourly in the Division of Parks, effective October 1, 2007. Erin Bradford, golf course clubhouse attendant, grade 106N, 9.936 hourly in the Division of Parks, effective October 1, 2007. Scott Bitner, public service worker, grade 106N, 12.663 hourly in the Division of Parks, effective October 1, 2007. Timothy Smith, public service worker, grade 106N, 14.806 hourly in the Division of Parks, effective October 15, 2007. Betty Landrum Byer, grade 112E, 1700.72 biweekly in the Division of Central Purchasing, effective October 15, 2007. Iris Gutierrez DiMarci, social worker, grade 111N, 1640 biweekly in the Division of Family Services, effective October 15, 2007. Ratifying the permanent civil service appointment of Anthony Kelly, trade supervisor, grade 113N, in the Division of Parks, effective September 19, 2007. Ratifying the unclassified civil service appointment of Rama Durari, senior advisor, CIO, grade 212E, $4,230.77 biweekly in the Office of the Mayor, effective October 19, 2007, subject to confirmation by the Lexington County Council. Number 40, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase and service agreement and a lease agreement with Lexington Thaet Animal Care and Control, LLC, for animal control services at a cost not to exceed $830,680. Number 41, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Lexington Humane Society for administration of the spay and neuter grant fund and program. Forty-two, a resolution, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a voting membership agreement with the National, with the National White Collar Crime Center, NW3C, for voting membership rights at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 43, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Sister Cities, $925, the African American Forum Incorporated, $1,800, and YMCA of Central Kentucky Incorporated, $400, for the Office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number 44, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute all documents, including loan agreements, mortgages, subordination agreements, and releases for the Community Development Block Grant Sanitary Sewer Financial Assistance Program for the Division of Community Development. Forty-five, a resolution authorizing Sections 1 and 2 of Resolution Number 287, 2006, 7, which authorizes and directs the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with various organizations to allocate donations to Arts Power Incorporated, $150 for the Office of the Urban County Council. Forty-seven, forty-six, a resolution amending Section 2 of Resolution Number 411, 2007, which authorizes and directs the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Jane F. Breck, Ph.D., for the provision of mental health services to children and family services served by the Division of Youth Services, and authorizing payment not to exceed the amount of $1,000 to authorize payment not to exceed the amount of $2,500. Number 47, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a facility usage contract with Beck County Board of Education with four Windburn Middle School at a cost not to exceed $23,467. And number 48, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute contracts with Cumberland Hill Neighborhood Association, $754, Georgetown Street Area Neighborhood Association, $5,299, Historic Western Suburb Neighborhood Association, $7,600, Mintel Neighborhood Association, $600, South Point Residential Association, $1,0875, Tan Bark Association of Neighbors, $1,000, Wellington Townhouse Homestead Association, Incorporated, $1,000, Eastland Parkway Neighborhood Association, Incorporated, $1,720, Fairway Neighborhood Association, $7,345, Lansdowne Neighborhood Association, $6,315, Palomar Hills Community Association, Incorporated, $7,600, Seven Parks Neighborhood Association, $2,700, Spindletop Community Association, $992, Woodfield Homes Association, $7,600, and Wyndham Downs Homestead Association, $7,600, for carrying out various neighborhood activities and improvements at a cost not to exceed $60,000.
Thank you very much. Are there any motions with respect to those resolutions? Mayor, these are, that's first reading. Just first reading. I appreciate your enthusiasm. All right. Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules in order to give a second reading to Number 33, please.
Councilmember James.
Mayor, I would also like to suspend the rules, but to give second reading to Number 31.
Thank you. Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 40 and 41. Thank you, Mayor. Number 48, please.
Anything further? And we have a second. Councilmember Gordon, any further discussion? Those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by voting aye electronically.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, please vote nay electronically. Motion carries. Madam Clerk? Let me back up, I may have miscounted. All right. It appears as though we have the votes necessary to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number thirty-three, thirty-one. Resolution except, for second reading, a resolution accepting the bid of Amtech of Kentucky Incorporated, establishing a price contract for maintenance of out, for outdoor sirens. Number thirty-three, a resolution accepting the bid of Ball Homes, establishing a price contract for the donation of printed materials, scorecards for the Division of Parks. Number forty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase and service agreement and a lease agreement with Lexington Fayette Animal Care and Control LLC, for the animal control services, at a cost not to exceed eight hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Number forty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase and service agreement with the Lexington Humane Society for administration of the spay and neuter grant fund and program. And number forty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase and service agreement and a lease agreement with Lexington Fayette Animal Care and Control LLC, for the animal control services, at a cost not to exceed eight hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Number forty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase and service agreement with the Lexington Humane Society for administration of the spay and neuter grant fund and program. And number forty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute contracts with Cumberland Hill Neighborhood Association, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, Georgetown Street Area Neighborhood Association, five thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, Historic Western Suburb Neighborhood Association, seven six, seventy-six hundred dollars, Mentel Neighborhood Association, six hundred dollars, South Point Residential Association, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, Tan Bark Association of Neighborhoods, one thousand dollars, Wellington Townhouse, uh, Homeowners Association Incorporated, one thousand dollars, Eastland Parkway Neighborhood Association Incorporated, seventeen hundred and twenty dollars, Fairway Neighborhood Association, seven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars, Lansdowne Neighborhood Association, six thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars, Palomar Hills Community Association Incorporated, seventy-six hundred dollars, Seven Parks Neighborhood Association, twenty-seven hundred dollars, Spindletop Community Association, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, Woodfield Homes Association, seventy-six hundred dollars, and Wyndham Downs Homeowners Association, seventy-six hundred dollars, for carrying out various neighborhood activities and improvements, at a cost not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. And the motion.
Thank you very much. Do we hear a motion to approve those items?
Yes.
I have a motion of the Councilmember Ellinger, and a second of Councilmember McCord. Any discussion? Then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll, and council members, please vote electronically.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stennett?
Aye.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray, Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
I've got that backwards, sorry. Mr. Gray and Ms. James. Mr. Lane?
Yes.
And Mr. McCord?
Yes.
I apologize.
Thank you very much. Those matters are approved. We have communications from the mayor for information purposes only, so no action is necessary. Are there any, are there any announcements?
One announcement.
Councilmember Ellinger?
I wonder whether anybody would be aware of that Mr. McCord will be running his third marathon on Sunday.[1647.51]